I called the October 24th work session of the Port of the City Council to order.
That's what he said.
And I ask Senator Clark to call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simms.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Mayor Rowe.
Here.
And before we start with tonight's session, October, October 17th, 2017, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as you may know, breast cancer is the second-leading cause of death for women, and actually men get it too. And so, to show our support in this great cause, the Pride Department has given us these shirts, sweatshirts to wear. And we're here to support the fight against breast cancer. And thank you, everybody, that's wearing pink. And I am so pleased that we have special guests tonight, our General Assembly delegation. And I was thinking about this, I don't think that there's a federal relationship between a local government and their delegation, as one that exists between Portsmouth and its delegation. It's like a team that's practiced, and practiced, and practiced, and hits it right in the game. And it's a real special honor to welcome each one of you tonight. And we are very, very thankful for what you do during this session, and what you do for us during the course of the year. And we know that this session, 2018, is going to be a little difficult, because you don't have a home up there.
I'll take it.
But you've got a home here. And so, as you adjust to the fact that your building is being demolished, and a new one's being built, if we can help in any way, in any way, let us know, because you certainly helped us. And so with that, Dr. Patton, let's introduce our delegation. We have our most senior delegate, not delegate, but senator, the third ranking in the state, Senator Louise Lucas, who started off in government where all state politicians should start, and that's right here at the city council. That should be a requirement, in my opinion, to serve in the Senate or the Department.
I agree.
And we have Delegate Matthew James. And he is a member of the House Appropriations Committee, which is, I would say, the most important committee in the House. And to be a Democrat on a committee that is a majority of Republicans says a lot to your skill and leadership, and your ability to get things done. Thank you. And we have, would you introduce yourself?
I am...
I don't want to miss...
That's okay. I'm Kristi New Craig, and I am State Senator John Cosgrove's Chief of Staff. I've been with him for 17 years.
Yes.
And I appreciate you allowing me to be here tonight.
Well, thank you.
Because I'm from Portsmouth. I'm a churchland girl.
Yeah.
So Portsmouth is near and dear to me.
And you know something about politics from firsthand, not only serving John, but you've served on the school board.
I'm still on the school board. I was past chairwoman on the school board, yes.
Yeah.
So I think it's very important to serve local government first.
And Elizabeth has asked for a point of personal privilege to introduce.
Could you introduce the delegate?
Yes, I'm sorry. Golly day, I was calling, yeah. Delegate Steve Heretic, who also got a start in government here at this table. And thank you, Steve.
You have better chairs now.
We did have the...
I'm not sure I can recover. I knew that I was going to put my foot in my mouth. And would you like to introduce?
I would, mayor, vice mayor, and members of council, and the public. This evening, we have with us the new legislative liaison for the Port of Virginia, Mr. Dustin Reinhardt of Pete Stan. He joined us this morning at the PPIC meeting. I will mention that his last name is Reinhardt. He's no relation to John. It's not spelled the same way. We all asked the question. So thank you for coming back to join us again today.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And again, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here. Dr. Patton?
Yes, mayor, vice mayor, members of council, to facilitate the discussion going forward as it relates to FY, not FY 2018, state legislative package. Mrs. Sherri Neal will come forward, who is our Legislative Affairs Manager. Mrs. Neal.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of council, and our general assembly delegation. You're welcome. Prior to this meeting, you all received the information on the five legislative initiatives that council, you're here to discuss the council this evening, and hopefully the patrons, these initiatives. And I will say, I would like you to know initially, that I did listen to your suggestions and your concerns about the number of initiatives. And we had several meetings, and vetted them, and we went from 25 to five.
I like that.
Okay? So... Twenty-five included citizens' input, council members' suggestions, as well as staff.
That means we should get them all.
We should get them all. We're down to five from 25. So I think the way that we're going to proceed this evening is that, am I doing this right, Deborah? Left me. It's not moving. It's not moving.
Hold it.
Thank you. Thank you. So it's going to be a discussion. We'll put, I'll put up the initiative. The information will be on the board. You have the information. At your seats, you also have a copy of the brief. You should have a copy of the brief. It looks like a sticky thing. It should look like this. Does everybody know?
They've already received that.
Yeah, this is a modified version. But anyway, and for you to discuss, and at the end of the initiatives, we're hoping, presentation of them, we're hoping that we'll get our patrons this evening. And then, we would like to open up the discussion for our delegation, our General Assembly delegation, to share with us any insights they have on key issues that's coming up for the 2018 General Assembly session. So, I could get this to work. Next slide. All right, so the first one, for the purpose of the state capacity, Elizabeth River City, crossing rather, buyout. This is our initiative, and it's open for discussion.
It appears that you want $2.1 billion to buy it out.
Actually, any help on reducing the burden that tolls have on our citizens would be appreciated, whether it's a partial buy-down. And we understand, too, that the bond covenants may have restrictions on when the state can do an advance, or ERC can do an advance of total funding. But maybe there could be some way that the toll could be reduced with some type of subsidy from the state, much like what you did.
With the ports.
Well, with the ports, but the first time that tolls were going to come into play. And that was delayed.
Right. I recall, that's when I put in a budget amendment. And if I recall, I think it might have been for $500 billion. That was under Governor Bob McDonough. And I didn't get all of it, but I got a portion of it. And that brought the tolls down for a year. So we could try something like that again. If I could get it with Bob McDonough, I'd be able to get it with Northland, wouldn't you think?
I would hope, yeah.
Want a little help? Are you friends?
But you know, but you know, that's, as good as that is, it's still a Band-Aid. I think the thought on a buyout was, you never know what the financial situation for the principals involved in ERC. Granted, they've got a windfall profit structure, but to realize it is a period of 58 years as well. So what would, what's wrong with asking or negotiating a buyout? Obviously, the state would have to determine what affordable level that they could afford to buy it out with. But I think the citizens of Portsmouth, as well as other cities, I think is worth pursuing. To add to the conversation, Secretary Blaine has said that the bond covenants put a requirement that there's no buyout prior to 12 years from the date of issuance. And so, we understand that that clock's going to run. And I don't know where we are in that. Might be fourth, or fifth, or sixth year. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I think that's, I think this is a critical question for the citizens of Portsmouth. And I think that what we can do is we can continue to keep the pressure and ask for the buyout. Because I've always thought that at some point, between that 12-year period and now, it's going to become a situation where we probably can think about a buyout and relieve the citizens of Portsmouth from this burden, which is depressing our growth, quite frankly. So I think that this is a legitimate request. I'm not so sure we're probably going to get a lot of traction with the budget amendment, but I think it's something that we need to keep the pressure on with the Senate, in terms of talking about, how do we get this buyout? Because if I understand the terms of the agreement, the worst 162 pages that ever passed in my session on the House, is, you know, there's a point that we can buy this out, but we have to negotiate strategically.
Mm-hmm.
And we have to do it smartly. And we have to do it so that we get things back for our citizens. So I think this is a good initiative, but we need to make sure that we think, from a strategic standpoint, of alleviating, because all of the private-public partnership deals that have been done since this deal, learned from the Portsmouth deal.
They sure did.
Yep.
And that's the shame in it. And I think even, I won't speak for the Senate, but I'm sure Steve will, from the House standpoint, they realize that Portsmouth was put at a bad position.
It was just a bad deal all around?
And it was a bad deal all around, so.
And I can tell you, Mayor, that there are few discussions that we have that don't involve this exact issue. I know, you know, Matthew, on the appropriation side, I'm on finance now, Louise is on Senate finance, these are the money committees. And, you know, Northern Virginia's talking about their transportation projects, and they don't want tolls, and they don't like tolls. You know, we're able to remind them that we have already been stuck with that. And, you know, to help them avoid the same problems that we have, we need their help in return. Matthew's quite right. I mean, this is not going to be solved in a day. But this is going to be a very long, very strategic conversation, and I hope you can rely on the fact that we have them literally every day that we're there.
Thank you.
Worst-case scenario is to buy down, which is what we started with. So I'm just saying, worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
My first option, of course, would be to buy it out. But we may have to take what we get. I want to just try to be realistic.
Yep.
Well, thank you. And we know that you work every day. In fact, I...
So moving forward, then, am I, just to recapitulate, I'm hearing that it won't be a budget amendment, but it will be a conversation that will be continued with your colleagues going forward. Is that what I mean? Okay.
And we're working with new staff, as you know, in finance, because...
Right.
With that move to the new building, a lot of folks didn't want to go through that maze. And so, folks have been retired. I called Legislative Services just about process for judgeships, which is what I have to do right now. And all the folks who were there, when I got there, I was calling around, I couldn't find that one person.
There's been a lot of shifting of staff.
I mean, I'm talking about within the last 60 days, and even Betsy's leaving.
Oh, Betsy Daly?
Betsy is going to UVA.
Oh, that's a big loss.
And Legislative Services, where we have all our, Mary Kate Phelps for the judiciary, gone already.
Maria Everett.
Bray Everett. I mean, folks have, I mean, just since we left the session, so many people have left. I'm dealing with new people.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, people, they're not going to be my kids.
Next initiative. All right, the next initiative, constitutional amendment for restoration of convicted felons for voting rights. And you guys are all very well familiar with this issue, something that's been championed and challenged for more, for a number of years. Open for discussion.
Thank you.
Well, I see no problem with introducing the legislation, and of course, you know, this always gets pushed back. But for lack of trying, we're not going to get anywhere unless we put it in, so. I'll take that one.
Do I have the House?
House version?
House.
Yeah, we'll do that. I'll take that.
Both?
I'll take that.
Steve?
They're going to co, they're going to tag team, they're co-patron.
Okay, thank you.
They don't allow me with the courts of justice too often, so, because I'm not an attorney.
So I'd like to leave your co-patron. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm the non-attorney.
Thank you. Next one.
Play one on TV.
Next initiative. I was there, okay. Thank you. Nope, going the wrong way. Okay, Virginia Port Authority. This has, this is a two-fold one. The first one is a budget amendment to increase the road impact payments, the budget line from 1 million to 6 million. If you may remember, we fought to get it from 500,000 the other year, up back to 1 million. And so, there was a request that the mayors of the host cities had sent to the governor, asking them to increase that to 6 million. And we had also hoped to get some letters of support from the General Assembly delegation from the Virginia Port Authority's host cities. The second part of that is to go back again to request the update of the 1999 J-LOX study. And again, this is supported by all of the host cities at this time, so, open for discussion. Questions?
Well, I was there in '99 when the J-LOX study came out, so.
I'll support that. It does need to be updated.
Yeah, we just need to update it, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have Senator Lucas on the Senate side, and Delegate James on the House.
Yeah, again, we'll tag.
And co-patron, okay.
Yeah, they're tagging again.
All right, thank you. And that's for both items, correct? The budget amendment and the request for the J-LOX study?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item. House Bill 1547, as you kind of recall, Delegate McQuinn had this bill in the last General Assembly session for providing some financial assistance to nonprofit organizations that are maintaining historical African-American cemeteries and graves, markers, stones, and things of that nature. What we would like to do is to have Portsmouth add it on to this site, on to this bill. We have a nonprofit organization, the Portsmouth African American Historical Society, that assists with the African American Historical Grave Sites, and they are estimating there's about 300 grave sites that would qualify for the extraordinary maintenance, repair, renovation, and reconstruction. I'm told that most of these, the grave sites out there, the 300, they're either toppled over stones, or they've become some broken up or broken down. So it would be the higher, the higher amount. So we're taking appropriation. We estimate, let me get to that.
Yeah.
Well, at $5, and $5 is just routine maintenance. And I'm told, when I contacted Delegate McQuinn's office the other day, that the two graveyards that they're doing in Richmond and Henraco Comp and County, they're basically just cleaning the grave sites to overgrowth, overgrowth. We don't have that situation here in Portsmouth, because the city parks and recreation does that piece of it. So we would be going for the extraordinary maintenance. So resetting the stones, the estimate came in at about $200 per stone. The African American Historical Society estimates it's about 100 stones that would be qualified for that. So at $200 each, you're talking about $20,000 for that one. Repair and reconstruction of the stones, that is estimated it's going to cost between $500 and to $1,000 per stone. So they're estimating that's about 200 stones that were qualified for those funds. So at $500, you're looking at $100,000, and at $200,000 to $200,000. So it's a range in there.
From 150 to 200, it's something.
Yes. So this would require a budget amendment, as well as a legislative...
So that was my question. So you're going to need a budget amendment, plus...
Mm-hmm.
An amendment.
Plus an amendment to the bill, yes.
And the budget amendment, there was, have you looked to see if the money that Delegate McQuinn had in her original bill has been fulfilled?
$37,000.
Why don't I take this shirt on?
I was told that at 34,785. Thank you, welcome, Senator.
I guess maybe if I could restate my question. The budget amendment will all be new money.
Right.
All geared towards...
Right.
The Portsmouth.
Exactly. We wouldn't be pulling from her funds.
Okay.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah, right, that was my question.
Yeah. What they have is routine maintenance, so they've got the $5 per to 6,000 grave sites. So we wouldn't be going for the regular, we'd be going for the extraordinary.
And the other question I've gotten from some of my conversations with the appropriators, I'm sorry, Steve, I'm sorry, yes, but is this, is the request a one-time request or ongoing request for other cemeteries in the cities? Because that question has come up with some of my other appropriation committee members.
Be ongoing?
Not that this...
What, what I...
But I mean, I think that if we want to ask for something, if we have other cemeteries that are coming online, we need to at least be aware of that going forward.
Legislative Services, when I checked with them on this particular bill, to see how they, I'm sorry, you wanted to... When I spoke with Legislative Services, what I was told is that, to answer a question that came up with council at the last meeting when we discussed this, the bill covers all African-American grave sites, regardless of whether or not it's a city-owned grave site. The catch is that it has to be maintained by a nonprofit organization.
I understand.
Right. So I'm also told that when they put this bill out, because I thought it was going to be a Christmas tree bill, so to speak, but they said that that's not the case. It's similar to the Confederate monuments and graveyards that they have, they put money in, and they build, they increase it every year as they come on site. So they knew that this was going to be something that was going to grow over time. And so, this Delegate McQuinn's numbers were just a start. And also, in speaking with her aide, he was saying that they were, they are going to collect the numbers as they come in. So if we have 300 graves, we'll let them know there's 300 in Portsmouth, and she can add it to her list. So I don't know if I may ask you any questions?
No, no, no. That's good that you say that, because I think with some of my peers in the General Assembly, they're worried about this becoming a Christmas tree bill. And I don't think so. I think it's something we need to do, we need to do it, and we need to fund it.
And continue.
And so, I'm glad that you gave the response that I was hoping to get.
Okay. You're welcome.
And thank you.
Yes.
So we need money and language change.
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else?
And I'd like to introduce Senator Amy Locke, and thank you so much for coming. We know that you had a complication. You're fast.
Late class. That little T-shirt, my children, man.
You better have.
I want to get a big girl shirt.
Okay, so, so Senate and House patrons on this one. I have the House.
The Senate.
Thank you.
Very good.
So the next one.
Who took that one?
Senator Locke.
Sorry, what happened?
I said, who took that one while I was gone?
Oh, Senator Locke.
Okay, all right. Gotcha.
Too nice to be, you know, in your co-patron.
Chief co-patron.
Chief co-patron, yes.
I'm co-patron. All right. Whatever she does, I'm signing also on it.
You know, that's how we work together up there, yes.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
The next item is amending this code section of Virginia, dealing with the imposition of the communications and sales use tax. I'm sure you're all familiar with the background of it, so I won't go through. You know, it was once collected by cities, localities, rather, then in 2007, it was changed so that the state collected it, and they set it at one interest rate, so that it would be a level playing field across the state. In 2015, General Assembly directed tax, Department of Tax, to conduct a study to see, to evaluate the performance of this particular tax, and these are the results. Department of Tax had recommendations that came out of it, which include raising the tax rate to 5.3% or 6%. Or the current taxes, and then removal of the taxes of status. So what we're looking at is to actually tax cable streaming and video services, but right now, that's exempt in the code, as well as increasing the tax rate, and dealing with the prepaid card, calling card services, because right now, the postpaid aren't taxed as the prepaid. So it puts them on an uneven playing field. And just a little bit more information for you, in the report that tax produced, they said that between 2007 and 2014, the debt fund has decreased each year. The number of telephone landlines has decreased by 21.1%. 91.1% reduction in gross receipts from satellite radio services, streaming audio and video services. Prepaid calling services, currently are not taxable, have become more popular. They said for FY '14, if the tax rate had been increased to 5.3%, at that rate, it would have generated $24.1 million more for distribution. At a 6% tax rate, it would have generated $80.3 million more for distribution amongst the localities. As far as the current exemption for prepaid calling services, it puts similar services sold on a postpaid basis at a competitive disadvantage. Between 2012 and 2014, the amount of prepaid wireless E911 fee revenues estimated to have grown by 18.4%, while the amount of postpaid wireless E911 surcharges revenue only grew by 1.7%. So this particular item is supported by Virginia Municipal League, Virginia Association of Counties, and Virginia First Cities.
I'll take a stab at it, because I can tell you that I don't think this is going to find a warm welcome at House Finals.
We'll help you fight as best we can.
It tells me this is going to have a pretty short shelf life.
Well, if it's going to have to meet a certain death, I'd rather you than me.
I'm used to it.
Am I hearing, I don't have a Senate? I don't have a Senate bill on this one. Okay, all right.
But we are going to work together.
Yes, all right, thank you. I think that's it. Did I stick anything?
Yes, I have one question. How did you manage to get your initiatives down to five from 25?
A lot of meetings.
She kept beating on it.
A lot of surveys.
Senator Cherry just beating, beating, beating.
That had to have been, that's what I was going to say.
And we started with 25, we worked it down to five, and you guys were saying, you know, pare it down, pare it down.
Had a lot of what?
Policies.
Oh, okay.
Well, again, thank you very much. And Dr. Patton?
Mayor, I would like to say that our city council was very much engaged in the process in the surveys that they had to complete. Six weeks ago, there, we came back with several... Six weeks ago, there we came back with several sessions for discussion, and from there we have realized what we're putting forth to you all, and listened to the fact that, you know, you can put a whole lot of things, but the significance is that you put things that you all think that you can move forward on behalf of our citizens and our council. And we'd like to thank our council for their engagement, total engagement in the process, and thank our Legislative Affairs Manager for her diligence in making sure that the information was processed.
Definitely, it was a great experience.
Did you leave restoration of rights on?
No.
Resolution.
We have Senator Lucas and both of our delegates with that one.
He have advice for us?
The reason I was concerned about how you managed to get it down, I think you've done a very good job of being able to present a set of initiatives that we can hopefully get passed for you. The important thing is not how much you present, but how much you are able to get passed.
Yes, sir.
And I just have another thing that I would hope council would help us between now and when we're in session. One of the things that I've been pushing on is that we've always talked, at least in Richmond, about rural strategy and all this stuff and other things. I think it's time that some of the urban areas, not just Portsmouth, but Petersburg and even Danville and those, we start to craft out what things or how should we position urban areas for economic development growth? Because we don't really have a lot of incentives put on the economic development head. What can we do to craft out those areas that are in an urban dense area? Because for a long time, we've set back and we've marketed Virginia as a homogeneous product, and it's not. You know, we have urban areas, we have different challenges, and I think that it would be great to see the council weigh in on that in terms of what economic development tools do you need to help survive and grow yourself? And that's a discussion that I've talked to my peers up in Richmond, and I think that the opportunities are great in terms of not just incentives to get new product on the ground, but also in workforce development. So we have a lot of new funding things, so I'd be curious to say that, working with Sherry, what would you like us to see to push? Because there's not going to be a lot of new money, but we should be able to flow projects out there, and I would love to see Portsmouth be a pilot for some of those items.
Very good idea. With council's concurrence, can we ask the city manager to develop something for us to give to our delegation?
Yes.
I have something that I've been thinking about, and of course, you know, we've been talking about it ever since you and I were planning a district commission 33 years ago. And that is the regional approach to how we manage to bring in economic development. Because, you know, there was a time when we would steal from each other.
Yeah.
You know, one city stealing from another city, and that's not good for the region. What we need to do in order to be a viable region is for us to each city help the other. And so I think as best we can get all of the Hampton Road cities working together to try to make sure that, just like rising tides lift all boats, and if we can get everybody working together. Like if Portsmouth has an issue, something that's going good for Portsmouth, let's work together, not letting Norfolk come and steal it.
Absolutely.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
So we need, what was it Dr. Cook used to say? We're not going to prosper if we all continue to steal from each other.
Right.
So we need to help each other. So let's try to work together as a region. That's my take on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I recognize that this is more for the public at large than the members here, but this is an interactive process. Things happen in Richmond very, very quickly once the session starts, and you've given us a lot of homework to do here, and we're happy to carry this, but, you know, it's citizens from the communities that really need to be heard in this process as well, it's not just the members. You know, there are committee meetings that start very early in the morning, sometimes they go very late at night. And I can tell you, I've heard some perfectly good legislation come and go simply because they didn't have folks standing there ready to address it. And so with this, I mean, we need your help, we need your support.
Absolutely.
Not just today, but more especially when this thing starts.
Right.
You know, and sometimes, I'm sorry to tell you, that we don't get a lot of notice, maybe 24 hours, that a bill is coming up in whatever committee tomorrow morning at 8:00. So short timeframe, short fuse, but it's important that we get people standing up, letting the committees understand that this is important to us. You know, we will carry the message, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's really the citizens that drive this process. So just wanted to give that, you know, public service announcement.
And Steve, and I want to pick a bag on that because had it not been for City Council's presence in Richmond this past session, that money that we got out of the treasurer, so that we wouldn't have to increase our real estate tax in the city at $1.7 million per year for the next three years, we would not have gotten it had you all not been there.
Right.
They needed to see somebody other than the three of us. I mean, I put in the budget amendment, but your face has made the difference because they saw somebody standing behind us. And a lot of times, you're right, Steve, Matthew, good legislation and even budget amendments go by the wayside because it's like, well, you put this in, but I don't see any of your folks from your hometown here advocating for it. And so we were able to, we were as successful as we have been this year because of your presence, standing before those committees. And then, of course, you're talking to other members of the money committee along with us. That's really how that happened. It wasn't just us, it was your help as well.
Well, thank you, but we especially thank you all. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I'd like to call to the delegation's attention and Mr. Heretic and Mrs. Braithwaite. Last week, we had a phone conference, as it speaks to the state now requiring and trying to send persons who are at Central State and Eastern State Mental Hospital back to the communities from which they came before they were admitted. And we are spending an enormous amount of time through our behavioral health care workers in both Dinwiddie and in the Richmond area, meeting with these hospitals to share with them that we do not have the capabilities nor the housing possibilities for some of these patients that they are dismissing from hospitals. On our list, when we, when behavioral health care first received it, it was about 23 people that they wanted to come back to Portsmouth. Some of these persons' families, they've been in these hospitals 17, 20 years, family members are deceased, and we just have no place to place people who are in need of mental health services, and they have been in institutions. So Mr. Heretic said, Dr. Pat, this is first I'm hearing of this big push, and it is a big push, and they're requiring if we don't get and handle this, then our monies that we're receiving could be jeopardized. So we'd like for you to know that, and know that if we cannot house a person or have nowhere to put the person, and they are in Central State or in Eastern Hospital, that's where they need to stay at this time.
Is the CSB involved?
That's behavioral health care. We had the conference with our director, and they are. And that's where the persons who are going up there and working with the hospitals are coming from.
Now, that's, if I can ask a question. They made a presentation to the Appropriations Committee that there would be cost savings, and that cost savings from the system would be redirected down to the local communities. So it sounds like that's not happening. Because that's what they told us, they said.
We do not have the facilities.
No. I understand that, but what they had told us when they were doing this is that the cost savings by changing the paradigm shift would create new money, quote unquote, and that new money would be redirected to the localities so that they could create more capacity at the local level.
Yeah, well, there is no capacity. Portsmouth, there is no capacity for us to handle such persons who are coming back.
Because that's the way it was sold to the Appropriations Committee.
Well, the providers are not there to provide the service, that's the issue.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, just like you said, there's no bed space.
Resources have been made available either. So localities are getting the brunt without any support.
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't know that, that's part of the communication, that we can all work together to figure this out. Thank you, Dr. Pat.
I would just like to reiterate what Senator Lucas said. When we hear back from constituents, I'm the legislative aide, so I get the emails, and that's how I tally up how, you know, Senator Cosgrove is going to vote.
That's right.
We hear all these people say, yes, you know, please support this or please oppose it, and we have to hear from you.
Sure.
So you have to encourage your citizens, and even, you know, your local delegation, your council and school board, to send us emails, come visit us, because that's how we do things up there. And as far as economic development, we're having a Hampton Roads caucus meeting, and that would be maybe something that we could talk to.
We could do that.
To Senator DeStefan, because he really pushes, you know, regional, because, you know, Northern Virginia kicks our butt up there.
Right, exactly.
And we're really trying to come on strong with the Hampton Roads Caucus to work together to take care of our area down here, because that's important. Northern Virginia works very well together.
They all, I mean, they work hand in glove.
And we're starting to.
They get over on us by doing that too, because they are together and we go and splint it, and then they take it all and leave us with the crumbs.
And just to let you know that Ms. Sherry Neal is wonderful. I work with her, she's in my office all the time, she is.
Really?
Best asset.
She manages to do that when she's in my office all the time.
Well, she must rotate.
I'm up into a coming and going.
We're going to charge your rent.
She's your best asset.
Floating.
We're very good friends, and I listen to her, and she really pushes for Portsmouth, and I look forward to supporting her.
Well, she's been there longer than anybody else but me, and so she knows, I mean, she's an icon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's like another piece of the fixture up there.
I said I ought to hang my picture in the hallway, right somewhere. The last bullet in the last 15 minutes, they promised that we would be out here within the hours so that the council could move on. If you have, if legislators want to share any of their key insights on any of the hot-button issues that they see on the horizon for the 2018 session, we would like for you to share that with us at this time.
Budget.
Budget, yeah, money.
Budget, money.
Money.
Everything is about money. This is the even-numbered year, so it's going to be the long session, and so it's going to be a grind.
Say what?
I thought it was the show.
Sixty-three days.
Yeah, we sixty days.
Okay.
Even year.
Okay.
So it's going to be a grind.
Any other comments from anybody? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have more business, you're welcome to stay.
I'll never keep up with my purse. I don't have the mind here to keep up with my purse. Oh, yes.
Thank you. I'll text you about that if you want to say anything.
See, you thought it was everything.
And I will see you in a color.
You will indeed. At the retreat.
They were probably for that, but your bird and your truthful parade and demonstration. You got both. Oh.
What's next? Next is Mr. Solomon Ashby's parade and demonstration.
Would you like to do it from your seat?
No.
Huh?
I'll go.
It's a guy who clicker.
No, you go up there, he got to go up there.
All right, Dr. Pat?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we're going into our next presentation. Mr. Solomon Ashby, City Attorney, will bring forward the initiative, meetings and discussions regarding revisions to the city's ordinances to address parades and demonstrations in accordance with your previous requests and your previous, and City Council's previous requests. Mr. Ashby.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight I bring a brief update on the city's efforts to address concerns with regard to regulating parades and demonstrations that impact the larger community. Tonight I'll provide you a few of the ordinances that provide the foundation that governs parades and demonstrations, and provide you some updates on the city's efforts to enhance our efforts to address those types of issues, and also address some of your outstanding Approximately a year ago, the city began addressing issues as it related to and that surrounded spontaneous demonstrations. At the same time, my office began evaluating risks and issues associated with the closing of the streets, whether that pertained to fairs, parades, and other matters. During all this time period, various courts, including the Supreme Court, has promulgated a number of opinions that govern municipal actions under a rubric which I would call content neutral. You all have had some discussions, we've had discussions about sign ordinances that are coming online, and the Supreme Court as well as other courts have essentially put some parameters around municipalities' ability to deal with First Amendment issues, and requiring us to be content neutral in the way we address that. It is in that context and at your request that we come back today to talk about the increased efforts and timetables to address parades and demonstrations. The departments have met on a number of occasions, reviewed our current ordinances as well as those of some other local jurisdictions, and tonight we'll begin the discussion first with the bedrock ordinances here in the city of Portsmouth. The city of Portsmouth addresses parades as well as demonstrations in two large, in large part in two sections of the city code. Chapter 22, which addresses motor vehicles in streets, and chapter 25, which addresses parks. You see here, this is a portion of 2212, which governs parades, permits for parades and special events. Essentially, it says that there'll be, there'll be no special event, and defines parades, runs, walks, other activities designated by the city manager that occupy and proceed along the streets, except in accordance with a permit issued by the city manager and such other regulations that set forth in the city code. That is the basic premise. Current ordinance also has a number of exceptions. I've just put forward a couple here. Lawful pickets on the sidewalk, and another exemption is demonstrations that do not involve motor vehicles, animals, fireworks, pyrotechnics, sound equipment, where there's no fee or donation charged, and the city manager has at least 48-hour notice as it relates to that demonstration. The city ordinance also provides that there can be a charge for fee to address issues of security and cleanup. It also provides, in certain circumstances, that the city manager can request a deposit in order to cover the cost of those expenses. In the development of these ordinances, of course, they are designed to address public safety-type issues associated with a parade or demonstration. Those public safety issues are reflected in the same chapter. When we talk about a parade or demonstration of any significant size, of course, we have issues as it relates to pedestrians in the highway or in the streets. And so you see here in 22701, we talk about obedience to signs and directions from the police as it relates to pedestrians being in the street or the highway. Also, we address it in the manner of which you can travel down the roadway if you are a pedestrian in the actual street. We talk about having citizens be to one side and try to reduce the amount of exposure to the traffic. police as it relates to pedestrians being in the street or the highway. Also, we address it in the manner which you can travel down the roadway if you are a pedestrian in the actual street. We talk about having citizens be to one side and try to reduce the amount of exposure to the traffic moving forward. As I said at the beginning, the second section that addresses these issues is the park. In common parlance, we talk about the fact that public property is considered a forum for speech. And so, when we talk about First Amendment rights and having the opportunity to address the public, the typical places are public forums, streets, sidewalks and also the city parks. In our city ordinance as it relates to parks, we also have a permit requirement. The permit requirement is issued in many respects for those activities that are not sponsored or conducted by the city in terms of baseball, sports and those sorts of things. We do require a fee. In this instance, as it relates to parks, the Director of Parks and Recreation Leisure Services has some authority with regard to issuing the permits. Again, public safety is always a concern. And so, as you see here in the parks section, we do have some ordinances that govern the ability to make sure that there is not a disorderly gathering or there is no activity that threatens the public safety. Over the past few weeks during the time period that you all have asked for this information, both myself and the Chief of Police have been at national conferences, I should say statewide conferences and national conferences, addressing issues such as parks and demonstrations. I'll tell you, last week, I was at the Local Government Attorneys Conference and there was a section devoted specifically to parades and demonstrations. In those discussions, the city has, over the last few weeks, pulled from each of those discussions in order to develop standards, policies and procedures that reflect, first, our current practices as well as giving us an opportunity to enhance those practices to address the issues that you all raised. First and foremost, we've had, over the last few months, discussions with regard to risk assessments and insurance requirements as it relates to any function that would involve a parade, a demonstration or some other activity that would exist or be conducted in the city streets to make sure that we have folks responsible identified to address any kind of liability issue. Council, you all asked and had a significant discussion with regard to the terrorist list or how do we identify people or parties who may have a history of placing the public at risk or otherwise conducting themselves in a fashion that would raise a question of public safety. I wanted to report, we did look into those issues. There is no, quote, published terrorist list. What we have done and what we continue to do is when we have a parade or a demonstration, if there is an issue or we gain, once we get the information with regard to who is participating, we generally receive intelligence about those individuals, if they are a person at risk or someone we should be concerned about. And we do hold regular meetings in terms of briefings and planning for parades and/or demonstrations. Again, when the departments gather to make those kind of assessments, we're constantly trying to make sure that our regulations are content neutral. And we're trying to make certain that we have consistent application of the rules and regulations so we do not put ourselves in a risky situation in terms of the way we conduct ourselves as a municipality. With regard to these discussions that we've had in the city, one of the things we're putting in place now is we are reducing some of our review periods. Currently, for a parade, the status, standard time for a review is 30 days for a permit coming out of the city manager or the planning department. As it relates to parks and rec, it could be up to 45 days. We are now putting in processes and trying to improve our processes so we can start with at least 15 days and really try to reduce it depending on the nature of the activity to a shorter period of time. If you're talking about 25 people or more, 25 people, 30 people, 40 people, we know we can probably reduce that time period at a maximum of 14 days. If you're talking about a run or some sort of festival first time, we may need every bit of the 30 or 45 days. And so, we're in the process of structuring those time periods so that we recognize the need and the current circumstances in terms of addressing that. That makes us more flexible and, of course, puts us in line, recognizing that some activities have a time period or time sensitive or related to current events. And so, to have a 30-day time period to address something that happened last Saturday may not make sense. And so, we're addressing those sort of issues. We're also pulling from various jurisdictions best practices and putting those into the format, both policy as well as ordinances, so that we can best address these issues and get a handle on them as soon as possible. So, that gives you a little bit about where we are. The only other thing I would say is that prior to the conclusion of this calendar year, we will be putting forth some additional ordinances to address demonstrations throughout. One other thing I would mention, we have done some of the evaluations with regard to city facilities and their capacity, so we have that information in advance. All of this is necessary and helpful so that when we have an issue, somebody makes a request, we can address those in a neutral fashion based on a set of standards that are already uniform across the board. And with that, if you all have any questions, I'll answer those.
Yes, sir. Dr. Woodruff?
Yes, Attorney. The issue that I've raised concerning the limitation of those groups that have a history of violence after what happened in Charlottesville, are you, when you say content, content neutral, are you referring to the restriction of freedom of speech as far as any type of restriction that an ordinance would put out that it has to be careful not to restrict freedom of speech?
Yes, that's the content neutral part of it. But certainly, if you're talking about conduct.
Right.
A history of conduct, that becomes, I won't say less of an issue, but that's a different analysis if you have a history of conduct.
Right.
So, what we're trying to do is address those in a fashion that does not deal with content in terms of whatever the speech is, but actually deal with conduct.
Right, because the email that I sent to you, it was referencing groups that have a history of violence. And so, it wasn't trying to limit any type of speech. And so, on page, page six, it has current city efforts. And you said there's no published terrorist list.
Right.
Were there any consultations with the FBI as far as persons who, because these groups are traveling across state lines?
What happens typically, if we have an issue, if we have a party or organization that's identified that's coming in the area, in the normal process of processing that paperwork, there are opportunities for us to gain information if that organizations have somehow triggered the attention of various law enforcement agencies or whatnot.
So, wouldn't we be able then to draft some type of ordinance to protect citizens from persons who may have a history of violent behavior during parades or marches?
What I would tell you is that in each opportunity that the city has to evaluate these, much like law enforcement, we have a number of judgments that we can make based on the information at hand. What I would say is it'd be difficult to spell out in advance what that issue might be. The only thing I think that meets that need from the outset is these risk assessment and insurance-type policies across the board. Once you get beyond that, if you have a true issue, those are going to be judgment calls that come up within these briefings that we have in terms of situations or who's involved.
But wouldn't we know in advance, past behaviors, if it has been somehow documented by some agency?
In some respect, we may. But what I'm saying is we don't have, there is no published list. The only published list that exists are generally like the Southern Poverty list. And what I would say is those kind of walk the line of conduct and content.
Was there any, like, did we consult with the FBI at all?
What I will say is that we have talked about how we gain that type of information and how it has come to us in the past. And again, that it is in time. We don't get that information necessarily in advance. We tend to get that information in time.
So, are you saying that an ordinance that would limit those who have a past history of violence, that that shouldn't be something that council should seek to do?
I would say, I would say councils should certainly be vigilant to make sure that the staff, as we deal with these issues, because again, we talk about parades and demonstrations, they're all treated under the same rubric, but of course, there are different circumstances. Demonstrations can come up rather quickly and that sort of thing. And what we're trying to do is put into all of the measures from a policy standpoint that assess those issues. They may not come in a time period or a timeframe that council can act. But we're certainly putting together the backbone to have those issues addressed and raise those issues if we have a situation. And I would only say to you, for instance, this evening, you all will see in your revised closed-session motion, there's a security task force element to your discussion. So, much like that, you won't necessarily see it in an ordinance in advance.
And my last question, based on page three, it says no permit. So, what we saw happen in Charlottesville, that group and its B4, that group would not have had to have been issued a permit in Portsmouth.
No, I would, I would, without knowing what that application and what law was into, I can't say that.
They just want to come and march in Portsmouth, even though we know of some past behaviors, they could, they could get a permit under 22.12 B4?
They are eligible for a permit. Whether we would grant them a permit is a question.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's the same for everyone.
All right, Neil.
Couple of questions. I'm surprised that there isn't a list of organizations, because periodically, I think all of us hear on the news that such-and-such group has been added to a database. And I believe Homeland Security maintains a terrorist database, so might want to check into that. But my, my question is, okay, the city manager issues a parade permit. What's the, what does a citizen have? Can they appeal that to a judge? Because I understand that's what happened in Charlottesville. A judge ended up granting a permit. So, we might want to check into that. The other thing is when a group comes and wants to have a parade, let's not say it's a bad group, but any group, where's the cost for security? And the reason why I say that, the restaurant, if a restaurant downtown is having a big shindig, ours, a new restaurant that has entertainment portion to it, our use permit requires security. So, why can't we pass on security, make that a proffer of that?
It is on page three. Page three, on item C.
But the cost?
The cost is in there.
The cost, the cost is there?
Yeah. On item C on page three.
We do. Well, that's kind of vague. You know, if I'm planning a parade, I want to know, are you going to tell me after the event what the cost is or are you going to tell me upfront what that cost could be?
I will tell you that the typical process that we employ in the city today, if you file an application and it is of such a nature that we believe it's going to impact traffic, it's going to be of such a nature that's going to impact traffic and whatnot, they are generally directed over to the police department typically to address the impact and how that should be addressed, typically with a discussion of if there's a need of additional officers and what that expense would be.
Well, we might want to check that, because I know there have been events in the past, I won't name them, that police had to mobilize security and control traffic. And I dare say that nobody received a bill for that. So, I'm just saying, some of the language in this is open to interpretation. It's vague, it needs to be defined. So, if I come, so if I want, I go to you, I want to know what's expected, what have I got to pay? What hours can I demonstrate or parade? So, I think it needs some massage and.
Right, okay. We can do that, and this is still a work in progress.
Certainly.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Before we hear from people who've spoken, any council member who hasn't spoke got a concern?
That was my same question. Item C under the 22-12, because it talks about the cost that's being passed on to the permitting. So, I didn't know how we determined how much security, cleanup, personnel.
In the process of the application process, that application is viewed by all of those departments that have responsible public safety, parks and recreation, planning.
The engineer.
Traffic engineering, which would be the engineering. All of those departments are a part of a response to the application. The chief will put, if it's whatever they are planning and this many police officers are needed, no different than for, let's just give an example, for high school games, the chief works with athletic directors to determine, this is how many police officers you need for this. And then, that's the cost that's incurred for those who work. So, that process is in place. But with us shortening, working towards shortening, the timeframe of 45 days to this is just a small event and it's not going to impact, and we can get it approved in 10 days or five days or whatever. But bigger events, they will have to incur the cost, because the city cannot pay for 25 police officers being out for something that is going to be hell. I mean, it's expensive.
Dr. Woodruff?
That speaks to what you're raising, councilman, that speaks to special events.
Yeah.
Are you talking about a group that just decides to march, that they would be charged a cost?
Yeah.
Well, wouldn't that start infringing on some freedom of speech issues?
No.
Not necessarily. There are all kinds of parameters, size, needs, the whole safety assessment. So, when we talk about, that's why we titled this parades and demonstrations. If you've got five people who can talk on a sidewalk, your requirements, what you can do or what you would do would be much smaller than 5,000 people. And so, that is the spectrum across which we have to work in terms of evaluating these. And what I will tell you is different cities have different initial start limits. Here, we have, as opposed to a number, we have the circumstances where we say, okay, there is no permit. Now, I will tell you, if you've got 5,000 people and still no vehicles, no cars, no kids or whatnot, there's no sidewalk that can hold 5,000 people. So, we do have some needs to tweak. So, we do have some needs to tweak some certain things in terms of how we address it. But typically, if it's five, 10, 15 people, if it can be contained in a sidewalk, there's no issue. If there's a tent involved or whatnot, and the tent is in the street, one leg of it is in the street, then we've got a safety issue from that standpoint. So, that is why you will not, probably, no ordinance will necessarily encompass everything, but we are going to try to make this a lot more uniform and a lot more comprehensive in terms of addressing the issues.
All right. Everybody just got their question?
Thank you.
We'll look forward to you bringing this back.
Yes.
All right. Dr. Pat?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, tonight, under the city manager's report, we have four items. The first is adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of the $4.1 million in the City of Portsmouth for general obligation qualified zone academy bonds and setting forth the form details and provisions for the payment thereof. And that's the QZAB resolution that will be coming forward for the QZAB law. The second is an adoption of resolutions approving the 2018 state legislative package and the 2018 federal legislative package. The third is adoption of a motion to permit Holly Lane Ferguson to adopt a Portsmouth Police Department Mounted Patrol Unit hoist by the name of Emily, a 16-hand brown thoroughbeak mare. Those are the, no, that's it, okay? I have some other things.
All right.
All right, I have, before you, council, you have, you received in your package, this in your package of the vagrancy and homelessness information, I'm hoping you read, but I wanted to just give you, can you make that bigger? Wanted to give you just some background on, for the past year, the city has initiated several broad strategies to address the homeless and vagrant challenges facing our cities and cities across the nation. We're working with agencies, community partners, humanistic departments, law enforcement, and seeking grants continuously. Tonight, in this frame, before you, I'm highlighting the areas of engagement and the financial resources that are part of addressing the issues we face. And as you can see, that the HOT team, which is the homeless outreach team, which was founded in September of 2016, is in place to address aggressive panhandling of homeless individuals in the downtown area. And these officers are linked with these departments and these agencies that are across the city in the first part of the frame. And then, in the second, Portsmouth Support to Community and Regional Organizations, these are all of the ways in which the city are supporting through funding efforts to address homelessness and vagrancy in our city. And then, our ongoing efforts, it's collaboration efforts to educate and enforce laws, signage to address behaviors, and incorporate best practices for lawful curbing of negative economic impacts. And those are the areas of which we are currently working to try to address where it pertains to signage.
Yes, sir.
That was a good report. You know, I met with a group of business owners a couple of weeks ago, and I think the mayor probably, and some of you probably met with the same group. We need to certainly keep them in the loop. I don't know if they've received a copy of that. I think that would be.
Of the report, we gave it to you first, but now we can get it out.
Yeah. I think they definitely need that.
Okay.
I would also encourage us to make them, some of those members, a part of the HOT team, and maybe some members of the faith community as well that are within the arts district. Because I think it's going to, I think it's going to take a team effort, the city, the business community, and the faith community to get the arms around this situation.
All right.
If that's agreeable, Mayor.
If I agreeable, let's take.
Can we get a, can we get a copy of this?
Yes.
Or vice-agreeable. And if you would get copies for everybody?
Right.
And?
The copies of all of this you have.
I know.
This, yes, okay.
And that's being passed out now?
Right. And it's in your box, according to the city clerk. She's already put it in your box.
Yes, sir.
I would like to just say in regards to the situation that was publicized, and we received an email on regarding the business owners being concerned about some of the issues that have occurred downtown. Got to be careful unless we have some data or some evidence that these issues were caused by homeless persons. Unless, unless the business owners know that those were homeless persons that did that, they've got to be careful to just put a blanket accusation on that it's homeless persons, particularly since we have increased the spirits downtown as far as the brewery and maybe some of that contributing. So, I don't know, so I'm just.
Your point is good. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, to Dr. Whitaker's point, we also, through the chief and her team, have indicated that if there is an issue where one is violated, let's just say I am struck by somebody, well, if you're not willing to press charges, and by the time you get there, the police get there, you say, they hit me, but you need to look and try to find them, it's no way for the police to find who them is, because you, you know, you aren't willing to press charges. And so, we all know, as the chief, as the city attorney continues to say to all of us, every human being has rights, and we must respect the rights of every human being, whether they are vagrant, whether they are homeless, or whether they are living in a mansion. And our police department is very, very much aware of that.
Yes, sir.
This, I saw this in the article, I think it was a picture of a bench that had a particular business name on it, indicating that, I believe, customers of that restaurant could only sit at that bench.
They can't do that.
Is that allowed on public property?
No, no. No one can put a name on a bench. All the black benches downtown are city benches that anybody can sit on.
It's a wooden bench up against their property.
Well, that's a question, if it's on the sidewalk, and the one I saw looked like it was.
Let's have Dr. Pat and check.
I'll look into it. Thanks for that information, we'll look into it, okay?
And in the, in the report that we received, vagrancy and homelessness, it mentioned the benches. And I would like to think that we're not going to remove the benches just because some people are abusing them. To me, sleeping on them or putting newspaper on them, preparing to sleep on them, we need to deal with that, not by removing the bench that the general public can be using.
And we have increased, through our HOT team, the patrolling in the late hours of night, I mean, they're patrolling all the time, particularly where we had people discarding and moving things that belonged to some of the business owners. So, we are on top of that.
Good.
Okay. We have three, okay. And lastly, you have before you several report backs. One is the notification process for overtime in the fire department, you have that report back. You have the request for information from the Atlantic Woods Superfund project within, front of you. You also have an update on Seawall Area 3, which we are looking to open within the next week or two. We also have an update on the magistrate roll call office, the Portsmouth Sports Plus Gymnasium and Portside.
And I think you had said that we'll get the report back on the 13th from the.
Yes, November 13th is when we'll come back starting our budget process and dealing with retirement.
Good.
13th and 14th, 13th is the next meeting.
The issue of the overtime that was publicized on Facebook and hit the media, and I was asking a question about that. Now, the paragraph, next to the last paragraph on the bottom, you have, on the day in question, the captains were notified of the availability of overtime. Notification of all other personnel was initiated the day before. Within the city, the fire department does not know in advance what its staffing requirements are?
As in the email that I sent you all on October 1st, right after this Facebook appeared, and I listed all the things that particular weekend, sick leave, family medical, death in the family, or things that come up every day in every department. So, you wouldn't know in advance, and I can pull that email, that essential, you don't know in advance on any day what your complement will be in any department in the city based on these things that people could be out.
So, on that particular day, those 12 vacancies were all related to?
Yes, and I put the numbers.
They were all related to, at the last minute, sick leave?
There were nine vacancies that day, only nine on that day. And for some reason, on that day, when, as usual, and it's done today, it's done yesterday, you put out for, these are opportunities for overtime, on that day, there was no response back.
Okay, well, my question is, the vacancies on that day, they were created because of sick leave, death?
No, the nine, yeah, that's why those nine were there, yes.
Those were the day of?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, is there a policy within the city that requires fire persons and emergency personnel to work overtime if necessary?
Yes, I'm almost certain that is, both fire and police, yes.
So, why did not the chief or whoever's in charge battalion, why wasn't it required that the staff that was presently on duty stay on duty until that could be covered instead of creating the risk?
I don't know if that was done, I would have to get that information.
But I thought by policy that had to be done.
It may have been done, I'm saying I don't know.
Well, if it were done, then there would not have been a vacancy created.
I can't answer that right now.
Check into it.
I shall, and I will get back with you. I'll get back with you.
What I'm asking is, is there a policy?
I can get the policy for you.
That requires persons who need to serve overtime, that the chief or the battalion chief requires them to stay on?
I can find that out. I'll get that for you, Dr. Whitaker.
And the reason I'm asking this is because this, this was blown up in the media quite a bit.
I'm sure it was.
And it was on Facebook, you emailed us, and there's been a significant amount of funds that are being transferred for overtime purposes. And I'm curious, have we done some type of staffing model to see if we are efficiently staffing the fire department?
We are working with both police and fire through.
Well, the question I'm asking, has there been some type of staffing model that has been done to see if those levels of the staff?
Watch, you get back to us.
I shall, okay, because we're dealing with time. I will get back with you and all of it, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
And Paige?
I don't need to know this right this minute, I was just curious where we are as opposed to money spent for the overtime he was talking about compared to money that's budgeted.
Okay.
Okay, you'll get that.
We can get it.
All right, we're down, everybody good? We're down to city council liaison reports, are there any in the interest of time? All right, we do have a need to go into closed session, and a closed session may take, we're going to start our regular session at seven, so we may have to recess this closed session and reconvene after our regular meeting, okay? All right, we have a motion to go into closed session.
When do you want?
Read the.
The long one?
The long one.
The long. I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussion and consideration of candidates for the position of city assessor, and pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A19 for the purpose of discussing plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities, and briefing by staff members, legal counsel, and law enforcement officials concerning actions to respond to such matters as related to threat to public safety.
Yes, sir, a second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly seconded, Madam Pope, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes, and we're in closed session with those that do not.